Okay, okay. All right, it is 5:01. Sorry, it's okay. It's 5:01 on Monday, August 24th. And I am calling to order a special meeting of the Wassa Board of Education. All Wassa School District Board of Education meetings will be conducted as a virtual meeting due to an active emergency situation, COVID-19 pandemic. Meaning that multiple board members may be participating in the meeting from remote locations through the use of communications technology and that public access to the meeting may be arranged through the use of technology. Members of the media and public may attend in person by calling 1-415-655-0001. Then dial the meeting room access code 133-664-6560. Or through the virtual WebEx meeting, the link is available on the district homepage. In the event a passcode is needed to enter the virtual meeting, it is 1-2-3-4. All public participants' phones, microphones, and chat dialogue boxes will be muted or disabled during the meeting. Members of the public who do not wish to appear in person may email CPAC@wassaschools.org with public comment in the subject line. Those messages received prior to the start of the meeting will be provided to the board president. Members of the public who do not wish to appear in person may view the meeting on The meeting will also be available on the Wassa Area Access Media YouTube channel a few days after filming. All meeting access information shall also appear in a prominent location on the Wassa School District website. You may find the Wassa School Board meetings on YouTube. They are streamed live. Viewers may visit the site by searching for "Wassa School Board YouTube" in the search link. The link is tinurl.com/wsbmeetings. All meetings will also be cable cast on Charter Spectrum Channel 981 at the following times. Wassa School Board meeting on Monday at 12:00 PM, Wednesday at 8:00 AM, and Saturday at 6:00 PM. Wassa School Board at OP meeting on Saturday at 8:00 PM and Thursday at 8:00 AM. For those individuals with disabilities, including individuals with visual or hearing impairments, as well as individuals who may have limited access to technology, please contact Deputy Clerk Cassie Peck at 715-261-0505, or CPAC@wassaschools.org. Okay? With that, this special meeting is convened to approve the consent agenda. I am seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Jane's a first.
Jane Roush is a first. It appears we have Jane Roush as a first. Looking for a two. Beth Martin is a second. And Beth Martin is a second on that.
There is one change that's needed.
Lance, can you go ahead and say what that change is for everybody, please?
Yes, um, on the section for the Niola policy vote, um, it indicates that I have seen and Jane was yes, and both should be switched. Um, and Cassie is going to do that after the meeting, though she wasn't able to switch it in the board book material.
So it should be Trollope, yes, Roush, abstain, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, Jim Boucher?
No, the meeting minutes are in the next meeting.
Yes.
The meeting minutes are in the next meeting. We're approving staff changes.
Thank you.
So Lance, we will address that in the next meeting. This special meeting is convened for the sole purpose of approving the staff changes with the special meeting.
And there was an addendum in the special meeting. So there are additional names that are loaded into board book at 4:30.
If there isn't any further discussion, we have a first and a second on this.
Jim Boucher?
Yes, Cassie.
Thank you. Calo?
Yes.
Beth Martin? Beth Martin?
She's not unmuting herself.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Thank you. Jane Roush?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes.
Lee Webster? Lee Webster, can you unmute, please?
Yes.
Thank you. And Trisha Zucker?
Yes.
Thank you. Eight, zero passed.
Okay, so that motion passed eight yes, zero no. With that, I am seeking a motion to adjourn.
Lance Trollope?
We have a first from Lance Trollope.
Beth Martin.
And a second from Beth Martin. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
I think I still have it. Abstentions? Motion carries. The special meeting is adjourned.
Okay. Sorry about that.
We're fine. With that, I am going to, I'm calling to order now at 5:07 PM, uh, the Education Operations Committee meeting of the Wassa Board of Education. I will not be reading through the information regarding virtual meeting and, um, information, given that I just read it six minutes ago. So for anybody watching this, um, on YouTube, I would encourage you to go to the special meeting from Monday, August 24th, if you are looking for additional information on that. Okay, so the, um, first matter that we have is to approve the minutes. And even though we just went through that, um, correction, could we address that correction now in this Education Operations Committee meeting?
Yeah, sorry for that confusion. I heard consent and I thought I'd bring it up. So it's the, it's the portion that addresses the Niola policy. It should state that I voted yes, and then Jane abstained, and Cassie can make that change after the meeting.
Okay. Okay, so that's the change to the minutes. With that, I am seeking a motion to approve the minutes of June 22nd, 2020.
Okay, Jim Boucher is one.
We have a first from Jim Boucher.
And a second from Lance Trollope.
And a second from Lance Trollope.
Okay, thank you. Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Calo?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jane Roush?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Trisha Zucker?
Yes.
Eight, zero, all passed.
Okay, the meeting minutes have passed as with approval of eight and yes, zero, no. Okay, we are on Agenda Item Number Three, Public and Student Comment. Okay, we received a number of comments, and there is a little bit of confusion about the public comment process and what is accepted, um, as far as public comment and then the react, the response. So, um, we are meeting virtually due to the pandemic and accepting public comment by email, um, emailed to Cassie Peck with public comment in the stu, in the subject line. Of course, there are times where it's not there, and then we've followed up to see if it was in fact intended to be public comment. Um, and then it's submitted, and we are, um, posting public comment then within a couple of days. So Clerk Peck is redacting email addresses and any other information that, um, should be redacted from the submitted public comment, and then it's available, posted publicly, uh, similar, uh, in the same place where the agenda is. It's a separate link, um, but it's where we would find the agenda for that specific meeting, um, that the public comment is submitted for. Uh, like regular in-person meetings where the board does not reply to public comment, but takes it into consideration, that is the same process for public comment that is submitted by email. Um, it is, uh, submitted and, and the board takes it for consideration. There are a few things to be aware of with public comment in that, um, public comment is, the Board of Education, this is Policy 167.3 for members of the public that are seeking more information about public participation at board meetings, but the Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. To permit fair and orderly public expression, the board shall provide a period for public participation at every regular Policy Resolution and Legislation Committee and Education Operations Committee meeting of the board. Um, and we have been doing that through the, um, submitted email process. One thing to be aware of is that speakers shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. Public comments identifying specific personnel or students by name are not appropriate subjects for presentation to the school board and should be referred to the superintendent's office. Speakers bear the personal risk if anything he or she says during the public comment period is defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. The presiding officer values civil discourse and may interrupt or terminate a speaker's comments when the statement is too lengthy, disruptive, disorderly, threatening, or obscene. Okay, so we have a number of public comments, and, uh, what I will do is similar to past meetings, is I will summarize, I will indicate the individual's name, and as stated, the public comment will be posted after it's redacted, um, with the materials by the agenda. So starting first, we have, um, sports. We received, uh, a number of public comments regarding sports, and I believe all of them were in re, with a request to allow, um, fall sports. Um, a lot of them are the same comment, which is, um, so, so when individuals in the public go to review it, you'll see there's a lot of the same comment, but the ultimate request is, um, for fall sports. So we will start here. Um, Madeline Helke submitted public comment with a request to allow Wassa West Fall Football. Christina Laporte submitted a public comment with a request for fall sports. Um, Lori Gurink submitted public comment with a request to allow Wassa West Fall Football. Scott Gurink, uh, submitted request, public comment, parent request to allow Wassa West Fall Football. Dustin Erickson submitted public comment, parent request to allow Wassa West Fall Football. Brenda Behrens submitted public comment, parent request to allow Wassa West Fall Football. Lisa Elke submitted public comment, parent request to allow Wassa West Fall Football. Keith Behrens submitted public comment, parent request to allow Wassa West Fall Football. Morgan Bowles submitted public comment, alum student athlete request to allow Wassa West Fall Football. Lisa Moses submitted public comment, parent request for fall sports to resume. Scott Bookberger submitted public comment, uh, in regards to fall, uh, request for fall football and other sports, fall sports. Samuel Moses, um, is a district student that, student request for fall sports to resume. Vicky Trevillion, uh, public comment, parent request for fall sports to resume. Jenny Zaitz, public comment, um, for fall sports to resume. Suzie Rochetto, uh, public comment for fall sports to resume. Lasha Jean, public comment, student request for fall sports to resume. Jamie Rye, public comment for fall sports to resume. Sarah Nap-Gesick, public comment, parent request for fall sports to resume. Wendy Ormont, public comment for fall sports to resume. Joel Ormont, public comment for fall sports to resume. Olivia Rochetto, public comment, student request for fall sports to resume. Isaiah DeMoss, public comment for fall sports to resume. Diane Rodman, public comment, parent request for fall sports to resume. Phailene Bowett, public comment for fall sports to resume. Amy DeMoss, public comment for fall sports to resume. Madeline Howar, public comment, student request for fall sports to resume. Gary Stockwell, public comment for fall sports to resume. Sam Thaler, public comment for, uh, parent request to allow Wassa West Fall Football. Kim Dubile, public request for Wassa West Fall Athletics to resume. Lynn Bookberger, uh, public comment, parent request for fall sports to resume. Lynn White, public comment for, uh, fall sports to resume. John Ranallo, public comment with a parent request to allow Wassa West Fall Football. Michelle Bowles, uh, parent, public comment, parent request to allow Wassa West Fall Football. Jess Napiwaki, public comment, parent request to allow Wassa West Fall Football. Kristen Christopherson, public comment requesting, uh, fall sports. Karen Morris, public comment, parent request to allow Wassa West Fall Football. Mike Bowles, uh, public comment and request to allow fall football. Sybil Siccarla, public comment, parent request to review in-person education options and fall sports. Chris Balo, public comment, parent request to allow Wassa West Fall Football. Rain Howard, uh, public comment with a parent request to resume fall sports. Dylan Bookberger, public comment, uh, student request to resume fall football. Keith Trevillion, public comment with parent request for fall sports to resume. Kylie Deaton, public comment, student request for fall sports to resume. Kenzie Deaton, public comment, student request for fall sports to resume. Kaylee Fox, public comment for fall sports to resume. Scott Schaefer, public comment for parent request to resume fall sports. Chad Dennis, public comment urging, um, fall sports to resume. Janelle Panetta, public comment, request to resume fall sports. Tucker Lindman, this is a, um, student request for fall sports to resume. Sal Panetta, public comment, request to resume fall sports. Yang Zhang, public comment, parent request to resume fall sports. Stephen Jones, public comment of parent request to resume fall sports. Sarah Wolk, public comment with parent request to resume fall sports. Kristy Scholes, public comment, uh, parent request to resume fall sports. Rick Stengel, a public comment of parent request to resume fall sports. Hayden Jergel, uh, request, uh, student request to resume fall sports. Jeff Anderson, public comment with a parent request to resume fall sports. Tammy Silas, a request to resume fall sports. Those appear to be all public comments related to sports. I believe it is 59, um, comments regarding fall sports. Okay, additional public comment. We have, uh, a number of public comments submitted in regards to fall start. Um, I believe these are all urging reconsideration of the start of the school year with virtual start. So these are the public comments from individuals that are urging reconsideration of the modality of operation under which the school year will be commencing. Mandy Paulson, public comment urging reconsideration of the school year start. Heather Capet, public comment urging reconsideration of the school year start. Um, this also indicates, um, uh, public comment in regards to urging fall sports by, uh, Ms. Capet. Amy Dykstra, uh, public comment in regards to, um, the commencement, uh, of the fall year start. I thought this one also addressed fall sports, but I don't see that. Okay, um, so Amy Dykstra urging reconsideration. Of course, these will all be posted publicly, um, after they've been redacted, so individuals will be able to see full public comments. Marlo Turner, public comment urging reconsideration of the fall start. Jean Fish, public comment urging reconsideration of the fall start. Tony Little, public comment, um, urging reconsideration of the fall start. Michael Bouche, uh, public comment urging reconsideration of this fall start. Laura Lafont, public comment urging reconsideration of the school start. Amanda Bowman, public comment urging reconsideration of the fall start. Sarah and Stephen Reel urging public, uh, or public comment urging reconsideration of fall start. Um, this is a comment from, uh, Brenda Sunby, and this is support for the school year starting virtually. Kristen Roush, uh, public comment urging reconsideration of the fall start. Greta Wood, public comment urging reconsideration of the fall start. Michelle Lane urging, uh, Michelle and Tim Lane urging reconsideration of the fall start. Tracy Cooper urging reconsideration of the fall start and also urging, um, following WIAM conference guidelines for sports. There is a letter from Dr. Spangler, um, Katie Spangler and Craig Spangler. This is posted with last, uh, meeting's public comment, but, um, due to my error, I did not state the, um, public comment. It is posted publicly in the last meeting. We'll post it again with tonight's meeting. Um, but this is in regards to the fall start, um, and urging, uh, a different modality of operation other than virtual start. Carly John, uh, Carly Jans urging reconsideration of the fall start. Jessica Pearson urging reconsideration of the fall start. Kathy Kreischer, public comment urging reconsideration of the fall start. Kyle and Katie McCorson, public comment urging reconsideration of the fall start. Nate and Kim Poggle urging reconsideration of the fall start. Rayanne McKay urging reconsideration of the fall start. Yvonne Scheffler urging reconsideration of fall start. Jessica Tippel urging reconsideration of the fall start. Um, there was a second, uh, email from Ms. Tippel urging reconsideration of the fall start. It looks like there were just additional comments that didn't make it in the original email, so we'll make sure to post both of those. Uh, Jesse Borcker urging reconsideration of fall start. Um, Kathy Richmond urging reconsideration of fall start. Zach Assenson urging reconsideration of fall start. Steve and Karen Vanderberg urging reconsideration of the fall start. Angela Quants urging reconsideration of the fall start. Nick Garing urging reconsideration of the fall start. Cory and DeeDee Utac urging reconsideration of the fall start. Charles and Tara Berger urging reconsideration of the fall start. Jason Chan, Dr. Jason Chan, um... Um, this is a reaffirmation of a previous letter sent to the board regarding opening the school year responsibly, um, and is, uh, also urging mandatory mask policy. Amber Mickel or Amber Garing, uh, urging reconsideration of the fall start. Jessica Bowman urging reconsideration of the fall start. Jeff Anderson urging reconsideration of the fall start. Corinne Simmensen urging reconsideration of the fall start. Steve and Karen Vanderberg, um, I don't, this might be a second email on this topic, uh, urging reconsideration of the fall start. I might be duplicative. Amy Scribner urging reconsideration of the fall start. Felicia Zastro urging reconsideration of fall start. Jennifer and Nicholas Nelson urging reconsideration of fall start. April Van Rixel urging reconsideration of fall start. Lisa Bowman urging reconsideration of fall start. Jennifer Asp, Ernie urging reconsideration of fall start. Um, there's also urging following WIAM conference guidelines for sports. Suzie and Noah Bloom urging reconsideration for fall start. Heidi Gunther, uh, urging reconsideration of fall start. Jeff and Teresa Ambor urging reconsideration of fall start. Nikki Lindman, Erica and Nikki Lindman urging reconsideration of fall start. John Kreischer urging reconsideration of fall start. Mike Lemay urging reconsideration of fall start. Jamie Lemay urging reconsideration of the fall start. We have a few more public comments, everybody. Okay, so now we have public comment from Dr. Jaren and Jennifer Thomas, um, support for the virtual start. Uh, Margaret Starr, support for virtual start and mask recommendation. Um, public comment in support of virtual opening by Jay and Donna Coldwell. Public comment by Dr. Kay Grueling, um, in support of, uh, virtual start. Public comment by Dr. Edgar Betancourt in support of, uh, the district following the CDC guidelines on school reopening. Um, there's an additional comment submitted by Dr. Betancourt, uh, which will include, which was in response, um, in regards to, uh, the situation, uh, with Aspiris Hospital locally, and to be aware of that. We have public comment by Dr. McGrath, um, and that it, or I'm sorry, by Tom McGrath, and that is in support of, um, opening schools virtually. Public comment by Sarah Schnike, uh, in, in support of virtual learning. Public comment by Lisa Janneke, supporting the, uh, virtual learning start. Public comment by Kelly Rohr, supporting the, uh, decision to start the year virtually. Public comment by Dr. Sarah Hathworth, um, reaffirming the letter that the board received from a number of pediatricians earlier this summer regarding the measures that school districts must take. Um, this is in support of the remote start and also public comments supporting mandatory mask policy. We have an anonymous public comment in support... We have an anonymous public comment in support of the virtual start. Public comment by Linda Day in support of the virtual, the virtual start and supporting mask policy. Public comment by Carol and Todd Pond, support of the virtual start as well as support of mask policy for everybody. Just a few more public comments. Okay, then we have just a couple of comments here. This is in regards to referendum opposition supported or submitted by Jennifer Yang. And this is a public comment by Jennifer and Nick Nelson. This appears to be against a virtual start. Okay, that is public comment. Again, these will all be posted once redacted and available for the public to review the public comments in full. The board does receive public comment. We received, I think, all of these prior to the meeting. So it's, this is all information available to the board and will be available to the public within a few days after the redaction process. It sounds, Lee, it looks like Lee has a comment or question.
I've seen a number of comments that people were expecting us to be addressing the first world agreement decision. And considering that at this time, and I think that if we haven't, we don't have that on the agenda. And I'm very concerned that we may end up having some people very upset by the fact that we do not have the agenda.
Well, the agenda was posted publicly on Friday and there, at no time was there going to be discussion of how the fall start is going to be. This is not changing from the virtual start of the school year. Keep in mind also that this is Education Operations Committee meeting. Nothing that happens in tonight's meeting is a final action. So I do suspect to receive some communications, but the agenda was available as of Friday and final action can't occur in this meeting in any event. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 4. This is the referendum planning update information campaign. I'll turn it over to Dr. Hiltz.
Thank you, President Zucker. Cassie, are you able to pull up the presentation? While Cassie's pulling that out, you know, clearly, most of our energy has been spent on planning for the reopening of schools. And so we've not begun any sort of an information campaign related to the referendum. We'll do that once school is started, but we wanted to inform the board of what the plan, the communication plan is and also address a few questions that have come our way related to the referendum. As always, we start with our mission, right? We are here to advance student learning, achievement, and success. And we believe that this referendum will help us accomplish those goals. And just real quickly, this will be just a brief overview for those of you who have not been monitoring the referendum, just so you have some context. This started back in 2014 with an audit of facilities and some financial planning. And you can see the timeline along the way. Can you keep going? Again, when we presented this plan, oh, two months ago now, strong support. And you can see the various areas that had the strongest support. Again, that safety and security piece, the infrastructure, technology upgrades, anything to do with students and supporting them, learning spaces, excuse me, some classroom additions. And then that, that's that second question about expanding pupil services and the spaces. Again, this just overview of the project. This is all about creating great spaces for kids to learn and staff to work and about supporting students and enhancing those student supports. So you can see the elementary and middle school work. Again, those secured entrances if they, if they, if they don't have them. The infrastructure piece, the safety pieces, communication, all of those things there. The middle schools could return with fidelity to the house concept. We will be doing, we are proposing to do some work at the high schools, some of those critical pieces. And you may hear about an academy model. That's something we really started last fall. And of course, that, the creation of that has, has, has not gone on during the, this virtual timeframe. And that's really about increasing student and parent access and knowledge of careers. But we'll talk about that much later. A lot of work on traffic flow. You know, again, just so people know, we understand the struggles with traffic around the schools and parking. And so that would be another significant change. Few additions where growth has been projected and to separate some gyms and cafeterias and a merger of Grant and Lincoln, which I'll speak to more specifically a little bit later. Again, finding a new home for Montessori and the development of an environmental learning center at the school forest. Then there is the second recurring referendum question. This one is specifically about creating those full pupil services teams, which is a strategic goal within our whole child, whole Wassa strategic plan. And we've discussed this, but again, this is all done with, with no tax impact. I think this might be a good time. There were some questions that came in about the funding. Again, the 155, 155 million as well as the 3 million recurring could both be done with, with zero impact on the levy. That informed our decision to do it now during this time because it's a good investment. But I wonder if Mr. Tess is available, would you want to speak anymore to? There was one question about what happens if the referendum doesn't pass? Could you speak to that if you're available?
Thank you, Dr. Hiltz. Correct, we're going to ask two referendum questions. And if both of these pass, we're going to report zero tax impact. And later on tonight, you're going to hear a little bit more detail. And I've been talking in the last three or four years reporting to you about how we can do that. We're prepaying some referendum debt every year. This year, we're prepaying about $13 million in referendum debt and saving taxpayers $1.9 million in doing that. And if we discontinue paying inter-debt and accept new debt, that's how we can do that without increasing the no rate. The question has been asked several times, what happens if the referendum fails? It's hard to project exactly what would happen, but we do have another referendum opportunity in April of 2021. That would also happen before we set the no rate in October of 2021. Following that, we have one more opportunity the following year. There would not be a November 2021 election, but there would be an April 2022 election. So there are some additional opportunities that would be presumptuous because that's certainly a board decision. It's a community decision whether we want to go to another referendum. But in a failed referendum, you learn something. You learn about what the community didn't want or parts of what they didn't want. And you restructure, come back with what you need and what the community does want. So there would be other opportunities, but eventually callable debt, the prepayable portion of our, of our debt service would run out. As a matter of fact, we probably have one more year to prepay debt in a significant amount before all of our debt, that's callable at least, stuff we can prepay and would run out. So we can keep this no rate impact from this year to next year flat. The following year it might go down a little bit, the following year it might go down even more. And if everything goes down, it makes a sense.
Thank you, Mr. Tess. As you and I were talking too, there are a number of complexities around property values and aid formulas and that make it almost impossible to project a mill rate impact if this weren't to pass. But thank you for summarizing that. You go to the next slide, Cassie. This is a summary of the various projects at the various schools. People have seen this before, so I think we can forward. At this point, if Diana White is available, she has been working on a communication plan. And there's a number of slides here that explain that. Diana, are you available?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Hiltz. So what you're looking at on your screen, it's the next two slides is a fact sheet that we created along with Nexus explaining the Building Our Future referendum. In this plan, what is being proposed? And again, on the right-hand side, you see that there is no tax impact. Cassie, you can go to the next slide. And this is the back half. Now, it's important to note, you can find this on our website right now. You just hover on the district tab and click Building Our Future. And this is the first thing that you'll see. And it will also be one of the mailings that go out in September and October. And on the back, this is a little bit more detail about the proposed projects. And then again, it references the timeline and of course, how people can vote. So going a little deeper into the informational campaign on the next slide, we are in the process of updating our website, as I mentioned. And what is going up this week are really school-specific fact sheets. So if this referendum is approved, you would be able to see exactly the impact on each and every school within our district. So that is happening right now. And then we'll also do a social media campaign. And part of that would be creating really what we call mini videos. It would cover specific areas of the referendum. For instance, the no tax increase, the safety and security aspects. They would be about 30 seconds to a minute long, but would answer a lot of the important questions out there. What else is important to reference, and I did it under the website updates, is we have a running fact sheet. So the common question though, that we've, we've listed those questions and we've provided answers. It is a working document, so as more questions surface, we will be updating those. Again, you can find them on our website under the fact sheet. So we're also doing school-specific fact sheets too. Those will be placed on our social media as well. We are also creating design boards that staff will be able to view within each of our schools. Again, just really taking those school-specific fact sheets and laying out the changes that each school would see. Now, an important aspect of our informational campaign will be community presentations. And in the midst of COVID-19, we know this won't be the same as it has been in the past. But what we're looking to do is having small groups of people in person. It's important to note that that number would really be about the 12 mark so that we could social distance. Masks would be worn. It would allow some in-person presentations and questioning. But we would also have a virtual option because like I mentioned, we know that not everyone can attend these presentations. But doing so virtually would give them that option. We're also exploring platforms that would allow community members to submit questions that they have to get those questions answered. So again, it would be very small in-person groups. I'm working with Cassie to, to reach out to our schools to kind of figure out who would be those 12 people. But again, there would be a virtual option so that everyone would have the ability to take part. So you can go to the next slide, Cassie. Thank you. So like I mentioned, mailings, there will be a few mailings that will be going out just talking about the referendum, the changes that will see to the schools. We'll also hope to engage the media through press releases. And then we'd want to educate our business community as well. And those would be virtual presentations again. So that's kind of a view of the informational campaign as it stands. So Dr. Hiltz, at this point, I'll send it back to you.
I do have a question for Diana. Okay, go ahead. Diana, I have a question about the community presentations and the ability of individuals to attend virtually. If that's a barrier for them, is there going to be something set up separately? So there will be the physical presentation with those individuals and then in either another part of that school building or a different building in the district, a virtual option available for people that can't attend virtually from home?
Those are all the things, sorry, those are all the things we're exploring right now to make sure that everybody who wants to take part in these community presentations would have the option, especially if technology is a barrier. And one thing I did forget to mention too, is we would want to do Facebook Lives too, something we're exploring because we know there are a significant number of people who could access those presentations there. The, nothing's off the table, all things we are exploring right now to make sure the most number of people who would want to take part can.
I have a question. Why do? Go ahead. Let me just connect my audio. There's another question coming for you, Diana. Oh, it sounds like Pat my head went too.
Yeah, hi, I don't know, Bob, but this is for you, Keith, there who, but I've got a couple of questions here. What is, we keep talking about this, in fact, from the perspective that there's no quote tax increase, but what is the interest in bonding costs associated with this $155 million referendum? Well, if you drive a tax increase, there are still real costs to the taxpayer.
Yes, there are real costs, real costs to the taxpayer. We oversimplify this, and that's what we're going to have to do right now because there's so many factors that are ongoing right now. We oversimplify it, and we borrow $155 million or issue $155 million of bonds at 3% annual interest, which is probably a little bit high, maybe a little bit lower than that. We amortize it over 20 years, that's about a $10 million per year payment on that bond. And if we consider our prepayments, our referendum debt right now is $13 million. So we're prepaying $13 million, that goes away, we introduce brand new debt payments of about $10 million. And again, that's an oversimplification.
So if I got the numbers right, 10 million a year over 20 years, $200 million, that's linear, very simplified. So the real cost of the taxpayer is what, the 50, 40 bucks?
Yes, I'm not quite done with that comment because we're tertiary hated at 22%. So we get a 22% off ticket on every year payment. So instead of $10 million per year, it's now about $7.8 million per year over 20 years for one question.
That's helpful. Second question is, I know that there's a lot of variables that go on with respect to the mill rate. But if we assumed all things being equal, I think that in order to be fair to the taxpayers, we've always been able to provide a range when we were expecting a, an increase of the mill rate, like for the past referendum. I think that we bold people arranged of what a decrease would be if the referendum did not pass. If it wasn't even on the table, nothing else was done, what would the impact be on a whole value of $100,000?
I could probably get close to pretty wide range if we could accept the assumption that no referendum is going to pass in the next five years. If we can assume no referendum will pass in the next five years, we could probably say something pretty bold, like a $3 decrease in taxes, a $3 no rate rather than decrease in taxes, $300 on a $100,000 whole. That assumption is, is kind of a stretch. I don't know, future boards and community would allow three or four, five referendum opportunities pass, we all pass it one. But you're right, Mr. Keith, that, that could become part of our presentation.
Okay. And then my last question, Keith, I guess this is probably for you. I know we've all seen how the, you know, part of this process is enhancing student services with counselors and social workers and all this stuff. And I know we understand, you know, typically where a lot of those services are utilized. So my question is, what portion of this referendum is earmarked, if you will, for the kind of the advanced programming, you know, that we could build out further in the district? Whether you look at it as, you know, further APIB programs, get them talented? What, what are the action plans around those, those types of programming?
So at this point, you know, the, this referendum is really focused on improving facilities, which obviously supports every program. So some of the conversations you're talking with APIB, that's really more of the high school. school conversation. So at this point, I couldn't put any number on an investment in our, you know, advanced learners.
The 12, or how many additional staff are we going to hire for pupil services?
It's, I think it's on one of these slides. I think it was 16 certified and 20 support staff, I believe.
So 36, and that's all geared towards pupil services?
Yes, it was a combination of counselors, school psychologists, social workers, health aides, and behavior support staff.
So there's no staff right now specifically earmarked for additional gifted and talented teachers, let's say at an elementary level?
Correct.
And nothing specific at a high school level either, you know, to have the quote senior of a high school, you know, type of advanced learner counselor or what have you?
At this point, we aren't addressing staffing at the high school, but that's part of that, what we're calling loosely now an academy model. That conversation is really just kind of rebeginning after this long delay through the pandemic. But that conversation will address, again, every student, but obviously would also, you know, impact our higher achieving students. That one's really going to be focused more on, you know, helping students and parents get real exposure to, you know, the 16-career pathways, you know, everything from, you know, military to higher, you know, higher-end pathways, you know, technical pathways, and helping students leave with, you know, a clearer vision of their future, a plan to get there, a plan to finance it. So that's the direction that planning is going right now.
Okay, well, I guess I'll just leave it with, I've been getting a lot of questions from people kind of asking that question, like, okay, what's in it for my students or for my children? And, you know, there's a whole end of the spectrum there, I don't think that we can forget about if you're trying to build support for this thing. Because everybody understands, you know, that elementary and middle school level, well, I can't say everybody understands, that's a oversimplification. But making this appealing to more people or to all folks in some form or fashion, I think is going to be critical. That's all I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kyle, did you still have a question? Yeah, okay, go ahead. Hold on, I have two.
Thanks. I have a question for Diana. So these community presentations, you mentioned that, I guess the limit would be 12 people and the rest would be virtual. These 12 people, are they going to be, like, specially chosen and invited? I mean, because you did say that they were public meetings also?
Okay, to answer your question, so at point, it would really depend on the school too and the size. So we're just thinking 12 roughly to make sure that we cancel fully distance. And like I mentioned, we are working with the schools to identify who in each school could be invited to attend, but again, making sure there are options for everyone who wants to attend, whether that be virtual or exploring other options for in-person as well. So when those people could be invited, could be PTO members or community members. It just really depends.
Okay. Thank you. Also, I also wanted to know, since these are going to be public meetings, will meeting minutes be taken?
That is not something we talked about, but we'll look into that.
Okay, because I would, I would really like it if meeting minutes could be taken just, you know, for transparency, for the community. And, you know, since we're talking about referendum, it is very important that meeting minutes are taken. So I would like to see that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Do any other board members have questions about the finance piece or the information campaign? Can you see any?
Yeah.
I can't see right now.
All right, I'm going to continue, and obviously, we can, we can listen if you have questions. Could you go to the next slide, Cassie? Oh, this is just more of the why now. Again, we do want to hear the community voice, and so we know that we'll have a strong turnout in November, high contract interest, high contractor interest, and very, very low interest rate. So it is a good time to reinvest, even though it seems, you know, again, we're looking beyond the pandemic to the future of the district. There was one particular part of the project that I wanted to address. There is some information, which I believe to be inaccurate, in the community about the link, the proposed Lincoln Grant merger. Want to go to the next slide, Cassie? This entire project was built from feedback, from the community and from the staff. And in this project, we can afford to build one new school. Where do we put it? I am pleased to be thinking that we can invest in a brand-new school in the city. You know, we tend to put our new schools where the growth is. This is an opportunity to take these two schools, create one brand-new school where we can offer extra additional supports. We can offer the socially-emotional supports, a state-of-the-art elementary school, and of course, better support for our teacher teams as we, as we create larger teams. This project is built to support and invest in these students. And why? What's this going to do? What is creating a new school going to do? Well, one, this would be the only elementary school in our district that would have two principals, and there is wonderful opportunities for support there. Obviously, we talk about the full pupil service teams. When we, when we met with some parents from Lincoln and Grant, you know, they certainly spoke about, you know, their connection to the school. But as we continued the conversation, they really spoke about the connection to the people. The people make the school. And as we talked about the fact that the two staffs and the two student bodies would be combined wholly, that seemed to resonate with some folks. You can see some of the other information here. Again, we would have additional teacher collaboration, brand-new, modern school designed for hands-on active learning. And a very important piece, we would not be reducing class sizes. In a larger school, we would, we would just maintain the class-size guidelines that the board has already established. And again, we'd be creating dedicated community spaces. I was looking around our map of neighborhoods in Wausau, and I noticed, I could not find one in the Grant or the Lincoln area. And wouldn't this be a wonderful opportunity to create a neighborhood association, and we'd have a ready-built space for them and for other community service providers? We'll do a little bit of demographics. We've seen this graph before. It's just a list of enrollments from a year ago. Third Friday count, Third Friday is our, is our most robust count, and we use it for a number of measures. You can see the operational capacity and then the percent, some a little overcapacity, several are significantly undercapacity. And I wanted to give people a visual of what we're really talking about here. This is our entire district. I did not have names on the schools, but we can kind of figure. Am I able to? I can't. Cassie, could you put your pointer on Jefferson? The blue up, up there, right there. That's Jefferson. Down one is Grant. Down one more is Lincoln. So if we go to the next slide, you can see that when we merge those, we really do create one neighborhood that's roughly the same size as Jefferson, Jones, Marshall, maybe a little bit bigger than Franklin, a little bit bigger than Hawthorne. If you go to the next slide, you'll get a closer perspective. This would be, the top shaded area right now is the Grant attendance area, and the yellow-green color is Lincoln. The red star is where the current Grant school is. It would be, we build in that same site. Interesting, one question that people had is that, you know, the students won't be able to walk to school anymore. Cassie, if you could put your cursor between Stewart Avenue, right there, those students in that area, Lincoln students currently, they don't walk to school. They get bused because Stewart Avenue is so busy. Those students would certainly have the opportunity to walk four or five blocks up to this new Grant or whatever we call it, school. Students south of Stewart, the students in that area would certainly be offered busing. And the same thing, you know, north of Bridge Street. So again, this is still a neighborhood. It would just be one of our, a larger school, roughly the same size as Riverview. Could you go to the next? Talk a little bit about the demographics. There was some concern that we are bringing together a number of children from poverty and children of color, and I've got to say that, you know, these are rich, diverse communities. And we are proud to serve them, and you can see here some of the numbers. This one happens to be ethnicity, and you can see where Lincoln currently is. I'm not wearing my glasses, so I'm squinting a little bit, but I think it's at 37%. And we, we measured ethnicity in terms of percent white, instead of trying to break out each ethnicity, but you can see the breakout of students by race, and the key on the left. So if we merge Lincoln and Grant, you would see that the percent of white students in that, in that school will be 39%, based on last year's numbers, of course, that will vary. But that puts it right in the same demographic ranges as our other city schools. Can you go to the next one? Disability, you know, the whole district ranges from 10% to 26% at John Marshall. Again, we merged these two schools, and our percentage is around that 19%. And lastly, around the children of poverty, right, free and reduced lunch. We range anywhere from 17% to 68% when we merge these two schools. If we do that, what is that number, is that 50?
The red one?
Here, 60, 60%. Thank you, sorry, I didn't bring my glasses. So again, we would have schools still with a higher percentage of free and reduced students than this school. So again, I just think that the school would represent the rich diversity of the communities, you know, successful, caring communities, and certainly, there would be needs, and we staff based on those needs. Can you go to the next one? I already mentioned this, you know, students south of Stewart would still be eligible for busing, north of Stewart, they would, they would walk as they, go ahead. And again, why Grant? You know, we've got one school that's older, Marshall. Frankly, you know, our projections are that that school won't be growing in enrollment. This is our second oldest school, and trust me, I love old schools, but we want to offer our students and our staff the best facilities possible. Go ahead. And again, this is not happening next year. If this were to pass in November, this would be the timeline. We'd be looking out in that '23, '24 range, maybe as far out as '20, '25. I think that's my last slide, and I'll stop for questions. Is that the next slide, Cassie? Yes, thank you. So I appreciate the opportunity to share that perspective.
I have a question, or something to add to the slideshow. Can you hear me, Cassie?
Yes. Yes, go ahead, Bob.
Bob, could you go back to that last free-reduced slide? I just want to call people's attention to something on that slide. It actually was called to my attention that some data on this slide shows slightly different from the demographic report that we put out each year. And it's important to keep in mind that the demographic report we put out each year is taken with our September count, and it also includes 4K, five students. And the data we show on these three screens, but most notably, the free-reduced screen, is only K5. And this was our most recent data when we started bringing this to the board. This is November data. And in a lot of cases, the September to November data doesn't change much. Ethnicity, you will see very little change. Students with disabilities, you will see very little change. Free-reduced number of students, you will see significant change from September to November. And the reason why is when students start the school year, they get what's called prior eligibility from last year. They finish the previous year being a free-reduced student, they start the next year being free-reduced students for the first 30 days. And then they have to reapply in some cases. There's some direct certifications that don't have to reapply, but they have to reapply. Some fail to reapply, some fail to qualify. Different things change. You will oftentimes see that September number and the November number, and quite honestly, for the rest of the year, the free-reduced number dropped quite a bit. As a matter of fact, Karen Fox tells me that this year, we have currently about 1,000 students that need to reapply for free-reduced services. They need to do that in the first 30 days of the school year. And we're working very hard to get them to reapply, and that's why there's a little bit of disparity in this number. The story is about the same, the ranks are about the same, but the percentages might be a little bit higher in September. It's important to understand that, especially considering the board received a question about that.
Thank you, Bob.
I have a comment. This is Beth.
Go ahead, Beth.
I wonder if part of the concern of the Lincoln and Grant families might be because our first referendum question was a little bit different than the one we have now. And in that first referendum question, more school families were impacted. When the question changed, and Lincoln and Grant families were more impacted, especially Lincoln, I wonder if we maybe could have done a better job of reaching out to them because they were more impacted? I know we're on a timeline, getting this going really fast, but I hope that, I want those families to know that we care about what they think, and during this education portion of the referendum, we will be reaching out and giving them more information. I think there's some misinformation, and I'm just wondering if it caused the referendum question change, that maybe they felt left out of the loop as far as communication goes. And that's not a question, it's just a comment.
Okay, I see Jim Boucher has his hand up as well. Jim, did you want to go ahead with your question?
This is, this is for Keith. Keith, I was just wondering, I didn't get my hand up fast enough before we got into the finance side of that again, and then your geographical, demographic slides. But, you know, I really had questions about the secondary level with that bond moving forward. You talking about the academy possibilities, having Beth, who's in that's created academies in two different schools, understanding the importance of the 16 clusters, the 72 pathways, and getting people going in the right direction. This really does tie in with working with students at a earlier age, and it's just not the secondary or high school level, but it's also going down to fourth and fifth grade, sixth and seventh, getting students to understand what type of professions they would like to go into, giving them options so that when they get to the high school, they have specific curricula choices that will apply to what they would like to do. So I don't want to miss that. I don't want to miss the academic aspect of it. Granted, you're talking about the financial aspect and getting the people into these positions, but, you know, starting that academy is going to mean that we do need more bodies, even at the high school level and student services, also working with social workers in order to get students understanding where they're going to go into the future. Mr. Comment?
Go ahead, Keith.
Thank you, Jim. And obviously, as well, we will be looking very much forward to the partnership with the business community to help us accomplish that. Agreed?
I have a comment. Oh, go ahead. I just kind of want to follow up on something that Beth was saying, and just really urge the communication piece of this in that there isn't, I don't think there's a risk of over-communicating here. I think that to Beth's point, you know, we can look back and see, are there errors to improve the process, to avoid confusion or the feelings that emerged? Because I've had conversations with people and who have shared how some individuals in some communities are feeling, and that's terrible. We certainly never meant for that. And, and that's terrible. We certainly never meant for that. And we're trying to be very clear on the incredible educational opportunity. And that's, you know, the role of the board is to ensure that our students have opportunity to achieve student learning and, and to advance student learning, student learning achievement and success. So to that end, we did vote on this in two separate meetings. We had the July twenty-seventh meeting. That was a special meeting in which final action could happen. But there were still comments that came in, so we agendized it for that second meeting on August tenth and still voted in support. But that said, you know, moving forward, again, there's just no risk of over-communicating here. Ultimately, what we're doing is giving this out to the voters to make a decision. But we want to make sure that it's as informed of a decision as possible.
Lance, did you have a question?
I do, yeah. It goes to the class size issue. I'm glad you brought that up, Keith. Because I think there was, I guess I understand you out there, people think larger school means larger classes, but we have the same number of teachers, the same number of kids, so class sizes don't change. But I also wanted to ask, or just had to confirm that this school would qualify for ADR small class sizes, correct? So they would continue to have smaller class sizes than most of our schools are able to have for least K three?
That's correct.
Correct, right? Yes, yes. Then maybe something also to include when you're providing information to Lincoln and Grant families that they will still have those ADR protected smaller class sizes that they enjoyed prior to this.
Can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, I just wanted to say that, you know, I agree with what Beth said, that I think that some of our community members didn't get the same chance as other community members to put their public comments into the referendum before we voted on it. Just as, just an example, you know, Stettin, the Stettin neighborhood, they did get a survey, but then the Lincoln School and Grant School families didn't. And so there was a special meeting that was convened, but it, it wasn't public. So, you know, I, I really think that those types of meetings should be fair. Everyone should get a phone survey. And so I do agree with Beth that, you know, all of the surveys and the, the questioning and with the community out there, it, it really wasn't fair on that level. So I really do think that in the future, it really does need to change and it has to be fair for everyone.
Ca, could I ask which survey are you referring to? I don't recall any survey to Stettin.
Um, there was one to Stettin if I remember correctly. Well, the point is, the point is that Lincoln families did not get a survey. That, that is the point. That other neighborhood schools' families in those neighborhoods did get surveys, but Lincoln School didn't. And so we can, we can talk about which schools got surveys and which ones didn't. But Lincoln School families and Grant School did not. So that's the point that I want to make.
Okay, not to argue, but I don't recall us giving any surveys to any specific schools. The only surveys we've done have been through Morris Leatherman, which were community-wide, representative surveys of four hundred residents per survey. And then we had a task force that was representative of all areas of our, of our district. I can't think of any, any school-specific surveys we've conducted at all.
Well, Keith, I, we had a conversation and you did tell me that certain neighborhoods, they did get surveys on the referendum about Plan A. And so because of those surveys, it was determined that Plan A, people didn't like planning. And so that's why we went to a different plan. So that's, that's the information that I'm talking about. And Lincoln neighborhoods didn't get that survey.
Okay, I understand. Yeah, you, you're misunderstanding. The, the survey that caused us to abandon Plan A, which if you recall was the reinvention plan to, to merge several of our elementaries and restructure middle-level education. That was the Morris Leatherman survey, which was a community-wide survey. We don't have a breakdown by neighborhood, but we do, if you remember, we do have a breakdown of all the demographics, right, by age and gender and political affiliation and income. So that was a scientifically representative, demographically representative survey, but nothing to any specific schools or neighborhoods.
Okay, all right. Also, I just want to move past that. Anyways, and also the, the task forces, the task force on the, on the referendum, it's really disappointing to me that, you know, we're talking about a referendum and this task force was created to give us recommendations. And there are no meeting minutes with these task forces. So we really don't know what they talked about and if there were any votes. And so it, it's, it's not transparent. You know, if we're talking about a referendum, we need to be very, very transparent. And I'm just, I'm, I'm just, it kind of blows my mind that there are no meeting minutes for these, for this task force. And so in the future, there should be meeting minutes that are taken at, at committee meetings, task forces, you know, all of that. And so there are no meeting minutes for these task forces, so we don't know what's been talked about.
Agreed. In my experience, I've never had minutes in any task force or, or public meeting, you know, you know, certainly board meetings are publicly noticed, required to have minutes. I've never seen minutes from, from referendum meetings. It's really, they're really presentations and opportunity to, for the public to, to understand the project.
Keith, I'm happy to follow up with legal at WASB and find out if they have a recommendation. Certainly, Ca serves as board clerk. I don't know what the appropriate level would be as far as taking meeting minutes as board clerk at these meetings, but I'm certainly happy to follow up with WASB and, and get their thoughts on, on these types of meetings and meeting minutes.
Great. Were there any other questions from board members?
I just want to be clear because, because we do have a significant amount of community members in media. I want to be very clear, there wasn't a survey that went out to Stettin. The survey, it was a random survey, not specific to any school. Let's just be very clear about that, so there isn't any misreporting or emails that come into that effect.
Go ahead, Lee, with your question.
Yeah, I, I know that Bob, according to Keith, that if there was a referendum that failed, we would give information for a second referendum that would be, that would help us, you know, narrow things down, process it, up later. My question as to you that we surveyed, whether we supplied since the issues with COVID and come up to find out where we can stand now in terms of referendum.
I don't know if there was a question in there for me. I'm offended you mentioned my name a little bit wobbly at the end. We're going to referendum in November third from everything the board has voted on. And how we find out if the, on a community day, if the community likes what we present, a successful referendum, or does not like what we present, you know, a successful referendum. Then the task begins with what didn't they like from that referendum. And I'm not saying we're going to go back to referendum. I am saying it's a pretty common strategy. Because there's something in this referendum that everybody wants. And the difficulty then would be to glean from this referendum what's good and get rid of what's bad and give it another shot in the air. I'm not making the board's decision, but I am saying that's a common strategy.
My question was more in terms of has there been any more information that we have gathered since the COVID crisis has been a significant issue that would impact referendum not correctly related to a lot of things that we have in the referendum? Because I'm excited about a lot of those things. I'm just wondering if we, if a referendum fails because of another factor, how are we going, how is that going to impact the future referendum?
You're right, we do have a lot of data. It's a matter of curating it, sifting and trusting sources and where all of this data comes from and how it comes together to make a decision in the future. That's probably the more difficult part, there's certainly an overabundance of data right now. But you're right, that, that will be a part of what we do after November if it were a failed referendum.
Well, this is Lance, that the, the second survey that we had was after COVID though. So we did some surveys that showed not, not as much support for the first referendum proposal. And then that second round, that was after COVID, isn't a very hard way of saying it, but you know what I mean? It was, it was after that, which helped drive what we decided to put in the final referendum proposal.
Jim, you also had a question earlier. Do you still have one?
Yeah, I was just going to say that for Tricia's benefit, for Keith's benefit, finding out about minutes being taken at some committees and that. Since I'm the region five director for WAS, I might as well do that, then get that information not only for us, but for other school boards in our region. Be glad to do that as quickly as possible.
Great idea. Thank you, Jim.
Well, one of the tricky things with minutes is usually minutes, minutes don't figure out what was said at a meeting. Minutes say what was done at a meeting. So informational meetings oftentimes, the minutes would simply be, these were the school district personnel at a presence and a meeting was conducted to provide information regarding the survey or regarding the referendum. But the minutes don't cover what was said, they cover what was done at a meeting.
Correct, Lance, and, and that's probably what we're going to get. And that's what I've seen as Keith has run that at best and I have to understand that. But it does give people to understand what has been accomplished. And if that's what we want, that's okay too.
I have a, I have a follow-up question.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a follow-up question, and this is for Dr. Hiltz here. So I'm going back to the, to the surveys. I just want to clarify, were the, was it found out in the surveys that Maine School did not want Montessori at their building?
No, no, we, the, the, again, the only survey we did was the Morris Leatherman. And what we got was, was information about the entire Plan A, which the community rejected.
Thank you.
Any other ques, any other questions? Okay, Bob, I'm going to set you as presenter now. Does this sound like a legal expenses?
We've got a couple items on the agenda that I'm not going to present for. One of them, the next one is the legal expense summary for nineteen twenty. And no action is necessary on that. We did come in a little bit higher for the year than we did the last two years, but the summary is in the board documents. Does anybody have any questions or do you mind from that one?
I would just say from perspective, it might be a little higher than the last two years, but it's lower than several of the years before that. We've cut it down.
Good point. Thank you. Should we move on? We approved a list of legal firms. Right, the approved list of legal firms is also in board documents. And this one does request action. And we're asking action from the operations committee to use the legal firms that we represent in this document for use for all different kinds of services, legal services throughout the year. And that would be approval on.
Go ahead.
Okay, so then we're seeking a motion to approve the attached list of law firms. The board and the district shall access for legal services deemed necessary by the superintendent, superintendent of schools or his designee. Okay, we have a first from Beth Martin and a second from Jim Boucher.
All right, Calvo? Yes. Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Trala?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Tricia Zunker?
Yes.
Okay, eight zero, that passed.
All right, may, may have heard, that motion passes eight zero. Back over to Bob for agenda item seven.
I've got four agenda items. I'll try to take all at once. We'll get to them. Hopefully you're seeing a screen full of my presentation, nothing off the side of that what's happening. I can see Tricia and Beth, and if I get a thumbs up, one of you two, I'll, I'll be quite all in. Okay, these are the four different agenda items. Three of them do require action, one of them does not require action. Just a summary of all four of them. We all have to do it in the annual meeting. You need to hold an annual meeting and we're proposing that it happens on September twenty-eighth. And we need to publish in the newspaper and publish in a variety of different locations, pay budget and a location and a levy. And tonight's action is the operations committee, operation committee's opportunity to say what is going to happen at that annual meeting when it happens. Then, of course, we take final board approval two weeks from tonight. And then we put it in the paper and tell the committee what we're going to do with the annual meeting. So that first agenda item is establishing the annual meeting itself. This is just a picture of the budget calendar throughout the year. We're probably closer to the beginning when we are rem, August twenty-fourth tonight. We're doing those three things. The actual annual meeting date and location does require board action. And here's the action on the bottom of this screen. They're asking that you make a slight change in order for this to be an in-person meeting. The WASB is highly recommending having an in-person annual meeting. And in order to do that, we're selecting September twenty-eighth at John Muir Middle School for the time and location, for the date and location of that meeting, which does require action.
Okay, and again, it's going to be at John Muir so that we can safely social distance. So I'm seeking a motion to approve Monday, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty as the date for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget hearing and annual meeting. The meeting will be held at six o'clock in the auditorium at John Muir Middle School, beginning with the budget hearing, followed by the annual meeting.
Okay, Lee Webster is one.
Okay, we have a first from Lee Webster. And if, oh, Jim Boucher. And a second from Jim Boucher.
All right, Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jane Roche? Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Calo?
Yes.
Tricia Zunker?
Yes.
Eight zero, that passed.
Okay, that motion passed eight in favor, zero against. Moving on to Agenda Item Eight, back over to Bob.
Knowing that all the notice that goes to the newspaper, who just selected the time, date, and location, next we have to at least talk about the estimated, uh, equalized value of the district. This does not require action. Uh, we know that equalized value is the Department of Revenue's, uh, best shot at using similar assessment techniques throughout the state, so they assess the entire municipalities. Uh, they, at this time of year, say what the entire municipality did, not what the entire school district did. So we have to make a little bit of an assumption here, because municipalities and school district boundaries don't line up perfectly. But these projections have been pre-activated the last few years. We are projecting property value growth in the Wassa School District to be approximately 9%. That's a pretty big number. And if property growth is 9%, that means the property value that needs to distribute the tax is that more, is that much more thinly distributed. Now, if one person's property value goes up, they don't see it that way. But if a new property is constructed, it's a little bit easier to see how it's more thinly distributed. In Wassa alone, the city of Wassa, the net new construction represented 3.28% of the growth. Our next largest municipality, Rippell, new construction is 1.58% of the growth. So there is new construction going on. Also, in the city of Wassa, they declared a tax incremental district, so that ended up coming onto the tin of how to equalize that. So we're using 8.99% for purposes of building the budget book and purposes of presenting at the annual meeting the projected mill rate. There's the math, Wassa went up more than most, increasing 10.47%. Uh, it put the Village of Broca on there still. Just show if someone's curious, what happened to the Village of Broca? It became part of the Village of Vane. I'll wait next year, I'll take the Village of Broca off. So last year, it was already in the Village of Vane. So that's where the 8.99% comes from. And I've shown you this before, the Department of Revenue comes up with these certified full value loans. They tell the Wassa School District that the city of Wassa gets 61% of the levy that you set as a school board. The town of Ripell gets 20% of that levy, and so forth. Your decision as board members and the community at the annual meeting, they establish all the different levies. The levy for the general fund, $30.5 million. That will certainly change between now and the end of October, because our aid amount will change. We don't know an aid amount until October 15th. And our general levy is going to be what's left when we subtract the aid from the revenue limit. So that's $30.5 million. Debt service, your motive is pretty high, $16.6 million. And it's that high because we're prepaying $13 million of debt that's not on our schedule yet. It's happening over the next several years, we're prepaying this year, and in doing that, we're saving taxpayers $1.9 million. When people see savings like $1.9 million, they want to quickly spend it on something. It doesn't work that way. We can only levy for referendum, levy what the taxpayers authorize through referendum. So it's $1.9 million that we don't have to tax, but it's not something that we can reapply elsewhere. If we put general fund and the debt service together, the $47 million just adds up the other two, and the community service is $662,000. Those are services used not necessarily by the school district, but the community at large, for a total levy of $47.9 million. The levy itself up 3.9% from the previous year, but because of the property rate increase, the mill rate will go down. The mill rate is anticipated to go down about 50 cents. Again, you don't have to take action on this one, but you do have to take action on the next one. This is saying what the budget, at least of the general fund, is going to be, and debt retirement funds in the newspaper when we publish it, and we're talking about it even in the annual meeting. The revenue limit's been around since 1993. We know it places the most pressure on our budget. When the revenue limit goes up, we have more money available. When the revenue limit goes down, or if it's restricted, we have less money available. That's the single biggest factor that puts pressure on our operational budget every single year. And the revenue limit kind of comes first, and then the aid amount is inserted, is subtracted to the yield of the levy. Okay? Uh, lawmakers sometimes manipulate the general aid amount and the revenue limit amount, control local taxes, that's the statewide means by which they can control local taxes. This is a very big part of that. For example, if the state aid goes up and the revenue limit doesn't, the levy goes down. That's one way of controlling local taxes at the state level. The revenue limit represents most of our revenue in Fund 10, 85 to 90%. We are anticipating a significant budget repair bill. And the more and more I talk to lawmakers, and the more and more I talk to people that do my job in all the other districts that are even more connected, the more they talk about this budget repair bill coming after the election. In the election, same one we're talking about for the referendum, is November 3rd. We establish our levy before that. Our levy is established at the end of October. In order to preserve the integrity of that levy setting process and the revenue limit, it is expected that the lawmakers won't change the revenue limit with a budget repair bill. What they're more likely to change is the per pupil categorical aid, which does not disrupt the levy setting process. Yeah, they want to maintain the integrity of the levy setting process and still pass a budget repair bill after the election. And really, the only way that they can do that is if they impact the per pupil categorical aid, which is outside the revenue. Here's some assumptions we're making. We're going to allow the revenue limit that's currently in the budget to happen, that's a 179 increase per student. And we're going to take that same dollar amount, that would be a $50 reduction in the revenue limit, and we're going to apply that to the per pupil categorical aid. That's the last budget that you saw. That's the budget you saw in May, and again in June. It was a decrease of $50 per student on the revenue. Since the state lawmakers don't want to mess up the levy setting process, we're going to take that same dollar amount and apply it to per pupil. Okay? We're also going to hold special aid reimbursement flat at 26%, which was the governor launch last year. Makes a little bit more sense if we look at it in the picture. We know prior to Act 10, revenue limit was cruising right along at a 2.86% annualized growth. Act 10 gave it a 5.27% reduction. The districts all over the state have to make reductions all over the place. Since then, it's increased at an annualized rate of 1.46%. So if it feels like budgets in school districts are under a little bit more stress since 2011, that is very much true. And the last two bars represent a picture of we're allowing the revenue limit to go up as current state statute suggests, and the current biennial budget, but we're taking that same dollar amount away from per pupil categorical aid. The revenue is flat. Here's the budget itself, or at least as much of it, that we need to pass tonight. Put the budget in the newspaper, create a budget book, one that is also in board book tonight, and proceed with our annual meeting. The expenses from last year and this year are given. It's important to understand, this is a deficit budget. The expenses are $106.3 million, and the revenue is $105.2 million. This is a deficit budget of $1.158 million. We are using fund balance to make this budget happen, because we don't have enough revenue to support all of our expenses. Now, keep in mind, from the May version of the budget, the June version of the budget, you already saw, there's about $880,000 in this budget for one-time stipends for employees, in lieu of a pay freeze, in lieu of a pay increase, excuse me. So a pay freeze, $881,000 in one-time money. So a deficit budget will be a little bit easier to tolerate, because it's one-time spending. But it's important to keep in mind, and we'll say this during the annual meeting, this is a deficit budget. Total revenue limit did go up a little bit, but remember on the previous slide, I'm letting the revenue limit go up, for statute, per pupil amount is what's going down. And then the general state aid is going up, and it's important for people to understand, when they see aid numbers going up, that's not necessarily the big pot of money at the state getting larger. In many cases, and in Wassa's case, it's because we're spending more money. We spend more money, we get more aid. Right now, we are in a spend more money mode because of repaying the referendum debt. Keep in mind, we're repaying referendum debt, saving taxpayers $1.89 million. In doing so, and by spending more money, we could get more aid. So that's how that aid number is going up. So there's the motion that I would like you to entertain, and while the motion's on the table for now, I can accept questions. And I can't see anybody, so...
All right, thanks.
I don't see any hands up, Bob.
Yeah, I didn't hear anything either. Okay, so I am seeking a motion to recommend to the Board of Education a preliminary 2020-2021 general fund budget of $106,391,771 for expenses, and $105,233,129 for revenue, for presentation at the annual meeting and budget hearing on September 28th, 2020. Seeking a first and second.
Um, Bob's presenting, and we're not able to actually see everybody, so if you could actually say your name, if you would mind doing the first.
I've got Jane Roche as the first.
Thank you.
It helps for me to say, I see a couple people.
It helps. A second, please.
I'm not seeing one, I see Beth Martin has a second, though.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, may I proceed?
Um, let me just unmute. Okay, we have a first and a second on the table. Was there any discussion on this? Otherwise, Cassie's going to proceed with roll call vote.
If I may ask just one question of Bob, uh, this has been, uh, roaming around my head for a long time. I know with the state cutbacks and repair bill and all of that happening, per student, uh, payments to us in years past, I think it was what, three, four years ago, we were at zero per student, uh, now we're at 179. Are you projecting that it's going to go drop lower than $50 per student? Go back below $100, or where do you think that's going to go, Bob?
I don't know, I think I'm unmuted, but that's, that's a tough question, Jim, it really is. And I talked to a lot of different people, and a little bit of different answer from everybody. So I have negative 50, because that's been kind of the consensus. Could it go lower? I suppose it depends what state revenues do. I'm probably more worried about the next biennial budget than I'm worried about this one right now. Uh, this one, could we weather the storm by pulling from fund balance, which we're doing, even beyond our one-time loss, we're pulling from fund balance, even if it's not our one-time money. This is a $225,000 deficit budget. And I'm a little bit more worried about how we can handle this in the future, we tackle current expenses. But next year is probably as big of a wild card as the budget repair bill.
So, Bob, as we're taking from fund balance, that is going to be completed eventually, and that's going to cause a problem down the road, and are we going to get into any kind of operational problems?
Only if we make a habit of it, because we do it this year, and we recognize it's a $1.15 billion deficit budget, but $881,000 of that is in one-time spending. So that leaves, it's a $278,000 deficit budget. As long as you get out of that habit quickly, you should be okay. And we'll have another opportunity to get out of that habit right away, a year from now. And if we take two years to get out of that habit, but every year you push that off, don't get out of the habit of spending fund balance, it gets you in trouble, as you already know. Right, so you have to be mindful that this can't be habitual, because you're right, fund balance does dry up real quickly. Because a $278,000 deficit quickly doubles next year, and triples the year after that, you're using it for current expenses, so we have to be careful.
That's the question, that's a very insightful question. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Bob? Otherwise, Cassie will proceed with the roll call vote.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Beth Stan.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Calo?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Tricia Zunker?
Yes.
Seven one, that passed.
Okay, that motion passed seven yes, one abstention, zero no. Back to you, Bob, for Agenda Item Ten.
Okay, now again, that is the last of these four that I have for you, and it's to establish the actual levy, I take that back, it's not establishing the levy, it's establishing it for the annual meeting, and that's it. The annual meeting goes further towards establishing it, and then you establish it finally in quarter. I can't pass up an opportunity to show you this graph again, right? Uh, this has been our mill rate, uh, over the last, how many years? Since 1968, from 1993, revenue limit started. You can't argue that they didn't do it, uh, more recently. Here is since 2000, and we, uh, did a really nice job of passing some energy efficiency work, and also having a referendum in 2015, and maintaining that mill rate. And we structured our debt in such a way, but we also got a little bit of help from property values. Property values started to recover about 2015 or 16, so property values recovering makes it easier to maintain the state of mill rate. And that's what's happening right now. And $10.79 is actually last year's mill rate, but we're projecting for this year is $10.29. And I get a little bit nervous when the mill rate goes down 50 cents, and we still suggest it can stay the same and borrow $155 million. I feel confident we can do that, because we're replacing $13 million of prepaid debt with $10 million of prepaid. So this is going to be the mill rate picture, and we've been a little bit spoiled the past two or three years with the fees and strategies. We can essentially, during this time of year, pick the mill rate we want, and we can hit that target, or be very close to it. So we haven't seen a lot of surprises in the end of October, when we finally establish our mill rate, and that's because we have that variable of the fees, and we can pick the mill rate we desire. This is the exact levy we're proposing for publishing levies. Uh, the general fund levy does go up 3.35%. The debt service levy goes up quite a bit, because we're able to defees or prepay debt and still have our mill rate go down. The community service levy is expected to go up $35,000. Uh, we're investigating right now, and we'll have a final answer on this, obviously, by the annual meeting. We're using some community service levy funds to maintain some of our outdoor spaces that the community uses. Sports fields and playgrounds, and some things that are used quite a bit in the center of the community. Uh, an actual part of an FTE to, to fund acquisition. And then the total mill rate, I got this on a previous slide, it does go up 3.9%. But because property value also went up 8.99%, the mill rate goes down 50 cents, or 4.64%. I can't say this one enough. Uh, the $13 million of the fees, that's prepaying your home loan, so to speak, saves taxpayers $1.9 million in the next 11 years. That's not money that's spendable elsewhere, but it's money that we don't have to tax. That's not money that's spendable elsewhere, but it's money that we don't have to tax. And then the motion down there is also here.
All right, thanks, Bob. So we're seeking, sorry, I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the Board of Education a protected tax levy of forty-seven million, nine hundred thirty thousand, eight hundred seventy-six dollars for presentation at the annual meeting and budget hearing on September 28th, 2020. If you are a first or a second, could you please state that, because Cassie can't see you?
I have gotten for a first.
Say that again, Bob? Say that again, Bob?
Jim Boucher is a first, and Jane Roche is a second.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any discussion on this before the roll call vote? All right, Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
I understand.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Calo?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Tricia Sunker?
Yes.
Seven one, that passed. Okay, that motion passed, seven yes, one abstention. Big thanks to Bob Tess, Noel Torson, and Jennifer Bonkey for those presentations. We are moving on to Agenda Item 11. This is an action item, uh, the masking requirement. Uh, turning it over to Angie Lloyd.
Good evening, thank you, President Sunker. Um, we are asking for the Wassa School Board, uh, we're recommending to the Wassa School Board that all staff, students age five and older, and visitors would be required to wear face covering at all times while in the Wassa School Districted buildings, except during the following activities. Face coverings can be removed if people are outside, and as long as six feet of distance is maintained. Face coverings can be removed temporarily for eating and drinking. People who are entering the school building during the day may be required to move their face covering briefly in order to identify them. Staff working alone in their offices, classrooms, vehicles, or other job locations who do not have any person-to-person interaction may take off their face covering. And when communicating with a deaf person, or a hard-of-hearing, or a person who is hard of hearing, or has a disability, medical condition, or mental health condition, that makes communication with a face covering difficult, and providing that social distancing is maintained, those people may also take their face coverings off. We're recommending that a letter, a letter pad would be required from a physician in order for any staff, student age five and older, or visitor to be exempt from wearing a face covering. And this is in line with the governor's masking mandate.
There are several hands up.
Okay, any questions? I think that's it.
Hey, Angie, so if, if I understand this correctly, do we even need this, given Evers' edict out there about the mandatory masking?
I don't know that we necessarily need to do this. It's something that we can, um, fall back and enforce a little bit more. Um, I think we'd be more comfortable having something this, something like this in place that we can point to visitors and parents to if they would have questions.
Okay, I, I just, I'm lying. I guess there's no other way to say it. I really, really struggle with the implementation and execution of having kids who are sitting in classes all day, seven hours or what have you, aside from eating lunch or whatever, that are gonna sit there all day, um, when we get back to in-person learning, and are going to have a, a mask on for that long of a period of time. Um, I, I don't see how it is practical. I don't think that it should be, if they're moving around in, in passing, in passing time or what have you, there's gonna be a larger congregation of students. Maybe there's something that, you know, that can be worked out there. Certainly optional for folks, but to, to mandate that only every day because sitting in the classrooms, I just, I can't get there, um, right now.
This is in line with what the rest of the districts in our area are doing, as well as most of the districts throughout the state.
Well, I understand that. We, we haven't followed what other districts are doing relative to going back to school, so I'm not sure why we feel we have to follow all the districts on this one.
Jane, I see you have your hand raised. Do you want to go ahead with your question?
I have lots of questions. Um, I think our, excuse me, I think we have to, um, go a little bit more in-depth. I think we have to have that the mask that's being worn has covered the nose and mouth, and that we have to include a portion about when it's time to eat or drink, that a reasonable amount of time is, um, allowed to eat or drink, and then the mask has to go back on. And, um, I, I don't think we should make an exemption at all for visitors to the building. All visitors should have to wear a mask. And I think we need a list from, um, of allowable medical issues that can be labeled as masks, as not meaning a mask. Because we do have some doctors that have taken the political side and will, um, allow anybody that asks to get a written note. And I'm worried about that. And for those people that cannot wear a mask, our staff and our, um, students, they should have to wear a face shield.
We do have Kathy Becker on tonight. I, I'm wondering if Kathy can address your question about if there are a list of medical conditions that would be exempt from wearing a mask? I'm not sure that that list is out there.
I think it needs to be created. And my four-year-old niece wears a mask all day after Montessori class, so that's seven, eight hours. And she doesn't find masks as everyone else in the classroom.
There is no list of me, um, medical conditions. It has to be on an individual basis. Um, and that's why we want to require a physician to write. And we have created a document that is pretty stringent, um, asking what is the reason why, what accommodations can be made? We didn't attach the document, but it's reasons for the mask-wearing, or not wearing a mask. Because I'm concerned if you're ill enough that you cannot wear a mask, then maybe you don't belong in school. Because the mask protects other people, not just the person wearing them. Thanks.
Lee, I see your hand is up. Do you want to go ahead with your question?
I do. Uh, I have, I have two observations. Uh, one of them is that if for mental health reasons, persons can't, uh, be exposed to wearing a mask, then if that probably shouldn't necessarily come from a physician, but any licensed mental health practitioner, I think should be able to, uh, answer your question quite right there. Uh, secondly, uh, the governor, as Manny, is prepared to imply, that he's gonna lift his restriction. If we make this a permanent restriction that we don't permit visiting on a regular basis, I think we're making a huge mistake.
We certainly could put in there that it may be lifted when the governor lifts his mandate. I believe we'd probably have to come back to the board on that, because the recommendation from CDC is still that people wear one if they're in larger groups, which we will be once we're back in school.
I would be concerned about a provision that lifts automatically when Governor Evers' order lifts. I think that Lee is correct, that this should be an ongoing evaluation. Um, but, uh, I don't think that we should include that part about it running, you know, the same timeline as the current state order.
I do think that it's important, so that we made a point for, for licensed mental health practitioners, because the reality is that, uh, the evaluation of mental health practitioners may be different from a physician, and it may be very difficult to get one done, if there's any intention of a physician being, uh, attached. Uh, it is, considering whether a senior mental health practitioner perhaps, I would
Lance, I see you have your hand raised. Do you want to go ahead with your question, please?
I have more of a comment than question. I share some of past concerns regarding, um, you know, the younger kids especially wearing masks, um, but on the other hand, I really think the community has, has, the community has changed over time. Um, I'm getting more and more contact with community members supportive of mask-wearing than I was a couple months ago. And for me, I'm supportive of the mask mandate, because the most important thing to me is getting our kids back in school. I'd rather have our kids back in school with masks than not have our kids back in school. And I really believe wearing masks is going to, um, move up the timeline for wanting to get our kids back in school, and it's going to also, um, allow us to keep our kids in school longer, both from a health standpoint, from a perception standpoint, from whether you believe it works or don't believe it works. There are people that do. And I just think if we're wearing masks, we're gonna have a better chance of having kids in school more days than if we're not. So that's why I'm supportive of it. Is it great? No. Um, none of this stuff is great. It seems like, like, the last two months, we're constantly picking between bad options, which one is the least bad? And I think the least bad is wearing masks, but having kids in school.
Jim, I see you have your hand raised. Do you want to go ahead with your comment or question?
Yeah, more of a comment. Until we're out of this virtual world, isn't this rather irrelevant to even have this in place? We want to have that when we come back, uh, to school, or Plan B. If that's what you're doing, Angie, putting it out there, so that when we come back to Plan B, hopefully very, very soon, uh...
Yeah, and Jim, we, we do have, we have students coming back in the hub as of September eighth, so we have to have something in place as of September eighth.
Yeah.
That's why we're bringing it to this one.
Jane, I see your hand is raised. Do you have another question or comment?
Um, I'm not hearing any other comments, but I do just want to follow up, that I do think we should have the, uh, inclusion in the mask policy regarding it must cover the nose and mouth, because there are a lot of individuals in the community, uh, where they're not properly covering their nose, um, in which case it's not protecting as it should be. So I would be in support of including that language in this policy.
Something that allows this to be revisited at whatever interval?
Well, it should be revisited. I guess that, yeah, the, the question is, how frequently would we revisit it? So we're already revisiting and evaluating the situation for the modality of operation. Um, once we get back in the schools, um, whether it's Plan B or Plan A, uh, this should just be a continual evaluation as well, I think, um, just based on the data that we have.
All right, I, I can get behind that. That makes sense if we're gonna evaluate it at the same time.
So I will add, cover the nose and mouth. Um, I can add a reasonable amount of time for eating and drinking. I think that's, um, a great addition. I'll also add that it'll be ongoing evaluation. So each month, when you would look at the data, you'd also look at the mask requirement. Um, and then we had proposed that we also add licensed mental health practitioners to that last statement.
Lee, I have a question for you. I know you're often, uh, pretty particular with, um, mental health practitioner. Is there a delineation here, uh, that you would suggest?
Uh, yeah, I suggest that there are licensed mental health practitioners. Uh, there are, there may be some people out there that are, that otherwise wouldn't have the, uh, credentials, but, uh, all the ma, masters, well, people with mental health honours, social workers, uh, um, parent-to-family therapists, psychologists, uh, are all licensed by the state of Wisconsin. And, uh, I, just like with physicians, I don't think that we would count that.
I think that's too broad.
Are, are, if someone's seeing a mental health practitioner, aren't they also working with their doctor, too, for their overall health?
Not necessarily.
That seems like an awfully large group. Can we put it heavy that they have to be in therapy at that time?
I, I guess that's not a particular problem, but it, it just seems to be that, that it's a much, much, uh, I, I am a teacher, making that evaluation just the same as a physician. I mean, I've been working with someone, for example, with extreme anxiety and claustrophobia. They have needed functioning quite well, but when they do a mask on, they panic.
So only for your, the people that you see, that that particular person sees, their, their patient, though, not just any mental health professional?
Any licensed mental health professional? Yes. I think that they, they have had some relationships. I, I, it would be ridiculous if you just went out and automatically signed off on whoever contacts me, I'd have to make an evaluation, uh, sometime in the planning. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's probably illegitimate.
I know that's true for you, but sometimes it would make it too broad. Maybe it bugs people, too, kind of abuse the policy.
Well, you, you have that today with medical providers, right? I mean, and that is a risk that you run with basically any profession. So I, and the other thing is, you can't ask somebody, are you currently under treatment for this, or what have, that will go against all PHI laws.
What do you think, I wouldn't deny them asking.
Well, no, you said that somebody asked me, are you currently care of a provider? How are you gonna know that unless you ask?
I think the mental health provider could refer their patient to a doctor, to a physician, to get that, that signature.
But then who's gonna pay for the office visit, for an unnecessary trip to their primary care doctor to give a request or to get approval slip?
I, I think I, I would be okay with this modification, um, to also include a licensed mental health practitioner. Um, you know, as has, was said earlier, I think by Lance, there, we are seeing this normalization of wearing masks. Maybe individuals, um, will find themselves more comfortable as time goes on. Uh, I don't think that it's for us to over-speculate on mental health conditions and, and wearing of masks. So I would be okay in support of the, um, we could modify this policy to include specificity that the mask must cover the nose and mouth, uh, that there is ongoing evaluation of the continued use, continued wearing of masks, um, modify to include physician or licensed mental health practitioner. Um, as far as Jane, your proposed, uh, language regarding reasonable time, personally, I, I'm indifferent, because I think reasonable time is one of those fatally vague terms, but I think we know that our students don't get enough time for lunch. So, um, the, the likelihood is that, you know, if they don't have it on the, every time they're taking a bite, they're, they're really not gonna be in that room for that long as it is. So I'm okay with including it, but I find it a bit unnecessary.
That's true. I wasn't, I was thinking about the issues where people drag it out so they never have to wear a mask, which would not happen in the schools. But I think if we're gonna allow more people to say you don't have to wear a mask, then we need to have face shields for those people.
No, and I think, Jane, you brought up a good point, too, about visitors. So I'm curious about any board commentary about that. I do think visitors, that we shouldn't have an exemption for visitors. Whether that means we have disposable masks that we supply for visitors, but I don't know why we would have a visitor exemption. So I would support changing the policy to include that language as well.
But what about the face shield?
And I, I guess I'm confused about that point. So visitors would have to wear a mask. They would only have to take it down for identification purposes. And then...
Okay.
Is that what you're referring to?
Okay. No, that's, that's good. Okay. No, that's, that's good.
I just have one more comment after listening to the discussion. I withdraw my objection to the mental health professional. That sounds logical.
Jane, you're not unmuted. Jane, you're not unmuted.
I'm wondering about the face shield for people that cannot wear masks for whatever reason. It offers some protection. It's not as good as a regular mask that covers your nose and mouth, but it does offer some protection for other people.
So you're saying if they will not wear a mask or have an exemption from a mask, then they, you're proposing that they would have to wear a face shield?
Yes. If they have an exemption, then they wear a face shield.
So that would be an addition?
Yes.
What if they get an exemption from a face shield?
What possible reason could there be to get an exemption from a face shield?
I'm not a doctor, are you?
No.
Okay. The evidence who constrictive that causes headaches.
Then you loosen the bayonet.
I'm wondering if Kathy Becker could provide any insight on this?
CDC does not recommend wearing a face shield alone. They are recommended to be worn with a mask or a face covering. All the teachers, all the staff will be provided with a face shield. So they, they will have both available to them. They are not required to wear the face shield, but they will have one available to wear if they need to get closer to a student to help with a problem or something like that. As far as face shields for children, there are, there are no medical exemptions that I know of. But again, I don't know. I mean, that's between a student and their doctor. They may have a condition that we don't know of. For the same kids who are unable to wear a face covering, a mask, due to claustrophobia or something, may also have that same issue with a face shield. I don't want to be the one to judge that at the door as a student is coming in and deciding who gets to wear one if they doesn't. So, and that's why we proposed having a fairly strict exemption for that. It's not just going to be an automatic get to not wear a mask. We also didn't want to put principals in the position of a parent coming up and saying, well, my, my student has asthma and they can't wear a mask. Now, the principal's not going to know if that's legitimate or not. So we want that to be documented by the physician or, as you said, a mental health provider so that we do have some coverage. But a face shield is better than nothing if they can't wear a mask. So they could get an exemption for both. But then my suggestion is if you are too compromised in your health to wear these protective devices for other people, then maybe you're too compromised to be in school. You should go virtually.
Jane, I understand your point. I just think we're going to have a, it's going to be difficult to say, oh, if you can't wear a mask, you have to wear a face shield. I mean, I, I, I'm fully there that we should try to be as protective as possible because we know we're protecting the other person by wearing it. It's not about protecting ourselves, but it's about protecting everybody else around us. But I think we're going to have a difficult time incorporating that into the policy. So I would suggest that we move forward. We know that we would modify this proposed policy to include specificity that the mask must cover the nose and mouth, that there's ongoing evaluation for how long this policy is in effect, and that the letter on letterhead, it could, it's required either from a physician or a licensed mental health practitioner. So the policy would have those three modifications.
No reasonable time to eat.
We don't need to include that. Okay, Jane's speaking.
I think we need to redo that face shield. Is that an okay compromise?
Well, we are reevaluating. So these, this, this can continue to come up, absolutely. Okay, I'm going to seek a motion at this time to recommend to the full board approval of the masking requirement with the three modifications as just identified. Seeking a first and a second.
Beth Martin is first.
Okay, we have a first from Beth Martin.
I will second. Okay, we have a second from Calo. Okay, Lance Traulup?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Calo?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jane Roosh?
Yes.
Tricia Sucker?
Yes.
Eight zero, that passed.
All right, the masking policy passed eight zero. Thank you, everybody. Let's move forward on agenda item 12. This is fall sports. So I'll turn this over to Dr. Hills unless you will be turning it over to somebody else.
I'll, I'll take this one. Excuse me. So just so you know, we do have our principals and our athletic directors available tonight if we would need them. They've been working closely with their counterparts across the Wisconsin Valley Conference. I've been working with the superintendents from the Wisconsin Valley Conference. And as you can see in the item listed, the districts in the Valley Conference have come to agreement around the lower risk sports and would like to see those continue. They're listed in the document. I'm not looking at it right now, but I believe it's tennis, cross country, volleyball if they're masked, and I'm forgetting one, tennis. Right, golf, tennis, cross country, volleyball if it's masked. Then the conversation around higher risk sports, which includes football, soccer, and swimming. The districts are currently mixed. Some would like to continue, some would like to take advantage of the spring season that WIAA has created in that March-April timeframe for, for any fall sport that we would not complete up to 50%. Seeing as we're in a virtual state to start the school year, it doesn't seem consistent to me that, that those higher risk sports would continue. And so my recommendation would be that those three sports be moved to the spring, the spring-fall season as created by WIAA.
Jane, do you want to go ahead with your question?
I think volleyball, having seen my two nieces play for Washtenaw East, it's quite a physical game. There's contact. There's going to be, masks only go back so much. And when you're heavy breathing, like you will be playing volleyball, that should be moved to the higher risk sports. I'm all fine with cross country tennis involved, but I don't think volleyball belongs in the low risk.
Thank you, Jane. That was my original recommendation. WIAA has come out and indicated that it's a lower risk sport as long as the athletes wear masks.
All of these sports, though, higher, low risk, these are all voluntary, correct?
Yes.
So I guess I'm struggling with separating the high and the low risk to different seasons when A, these are voluntary for the students who clearly want to engage in them. They're voluntary, I can't say them, they're quote voluntary for coaches, some of which donate their time, others which are compensated. They can choose to protect themselves however they want, given that the adults are the more vulnerable population than the students. And if we have other districts within our conference that are going to adhere to the fall schedule, given the fact that we could very well be back into, whether it's a hybrid model or whether it's fully in person with masks, we could be back there shortly thereafter that practice season or those games begin on 27th for these. So why, why do we have to, or why do we feel it necessary to, to make that decision today? Why does it even make it today? I guess make it at all. Why not let those sports continue when they are scheduled to continue? They're voluntary. If the kids don't want to go out, let them go out and let the adults protect themselves however they, they would choose to.
I guess in my estimation, Pat, that, you know, consistent with the board's vote to start virtually, it would, it would present a higher risk with, with those particular sports and the kids in, in that kind of close contact. And so if we're trying to minimize spread, I, I thought this would be consistent. But clearly, the board can decide what it wants to do.
Lance, do you want to go ahead with your question or comment?
And Tricia, I forgot an important part, so.
So I think I don't agree with Dr. Hills. But I think that your opinion is very reasonable. And I'm not all that confident of mine. I think it's a tough choice. But I really think that with swimming, I think with certain precautions, it could be pretty low risk. And for the higher risk ones like football and soccer, I'm not convinced that we've got a better chance of having a full or close to full season in the spring than we do in the fall. Unless we know that most districts locally are, are definitely going to fall. I'm worried about football and soccer getting on the fields in March. I mean, baseball usually has trouble with that in April, let alone in March. And that, so that puts our football and soccer players inside them rather than outside. And I think it's safer for them to be outside. I'd rather see them outside in the fall and inside in the spring. Not mentioning competing with their gym time. And we've got an overlap, you know, football and soccer were moved to the spring. We've got an overlap of the games wouldn't be done yet, or practices starting for baseball and track. So I totally understand that the perception is, well, I would think of sports if yours class are virtual. But this might be the safest time to have those sports because they're not in school, they're outside. And it also might be the time that they need it the most because they're not in school, they're not socializing with their friends. They may need this more. This may do a lot of good things for these kids. They may need it more now than they do in the spring if we're back to a higher priority in-person education at that time. So I would favor going ahead with the sports and then, you know, if we don't get to have a season, we still have that spring as our backup.
You just summarized the entire conversation we've had over the last several weeks. Mr. Traulup, thank you.
I said, I, I, the, I would go with football. I think your advice of allowing it not to is totally reasonable. You know, it's, we're all just kind of looking at crystal ball. I don't know which one would be better, but I would be for it. Well, I think the gym needs it. I just think it would be good for the ones that want to.
If I may, I don't want to just piggyback on Lance's comment, but I, I put together a little bit of a comment that I've been holding back for a couple of weeks pertaining to academics and to athletics, which AAA students were always pushing for, the academics, the arts, and the athletics. And, and we need to focus on that. After many years studying digital enhanced education, I have seen the benefit of blended virtual, but I have also seen the negative of the complete virtual. Two-thirds of our students in our schools and others do not do well in complete virtual, which we've already decided. The students who are affected negatively are students who have 504 claim IEPs. As an administrator in charge of special education in large high school with a large special ed program, we stayed away from educating our IEP students with blended and complete virtual because it was not a correct pedagogy for those students with needs. I, I wanted to be known and I want to have this on the record. I have been against the total virtual for a multitude of reasons. Beginning of this discussion, the last month and a half. But I am in agreement with the blended virtual and hybrid program and our, as our many neighboring school districts have done so that our students and teachers can do this safely. That's what the blended hybrid takes into consideration. Plus the fact we still can have differentiated education taking place with the blended version. Now, from the point.
Jim, I hate to interrupt you, but the, the agenda is item that we're talking about is fall sports. Are you, are you getting to that topic then?
This is where I'm coming to. Don't cut me off. We have taken choices away from our parents and students when it comes to the academic school year by going completely virtual. I do not want to take away choices from our parents and students for the second time. I want our students to be able to compete against our local schools as we have done for years. I do not want our students to have the travel to the Fox Valley if we don't have to. And we won't have to if we're playing here in the fall. And that is what will happen if we can compete fall sports, move fall sports to the spring. Looking at the past years with weather, East and West football and soccer would have to play all their games on the road because we cannot have synthetic turf fields. This would be unfair for our students, our athletes. I wish, I would like to make sure that we don't do that. And I understand, obviously, what you're talking about. But the bottom line is, I want to give our people choices. We need to give them choices. That's my longest IP in a long time, Tricia. There you go. To the point.
And Jim, I just want to make sure that when we are providing comments in the meeting that we stay on task with our agenda's comments. That was my point. It was not to cut you off. It was to make sure that we actually followed the agenda. Okay, so are there other comments on fall sports, Jane?
Yes. I want to know, are they going to be using the locker rooms? Because, boy, that would be just ducky for passing this virus on. And then I also think, yeah, the kids and the parents are going to take the risk. But they can expose themselves to COVID. And then if we go to hybrid, they're going to bring that added risk into the school and expose everybody else to it. And if we move the fall sports to spring and COVID is still raging, it just might be canceled for the year. As heartbreaking as that is, health has to come first, science has to come first. That's what I have to say. Thanks.
I have a few questions. Locker rooms, we need an answer on locker rooms. Okay, we do need an answer on locker room use.
We've not talked about that specifically. I wonder if one of our principals or athletic directors have had that conversation, would have something to add?
This is, this is Brian Miller, athletic director at West. That conversation has come up on almost every sport. And the consensus is that locker rooms would not be used. So kids would return home on the bus according to transportation that would be set up without the locker rooms. And I would add that that's also a little bit to the difficulty of swimming, not just for the Washtenaw schools, but the entire conference has had a difficult time trying to figure out how to run swimming in a closed environment.
How did you want to go ahead with it?
Brian, this is Lance Dunning. We've heard from people taking part in swimming already. You know, that's the thing is we're talking about what kind of sports take place. But sports are taking place and they've been taking place also coming along. There's kids playing softball, kids playing soccer, and swimming is happening right now. But one of the things that we've heard from several parents of swimmers is that they're wearing their suits to and from the pool with clothes over them, wearing masks inside the pool area, taking them off just. wearing masks inside the pool area, taking them off just to swim and using alternate lanes. So to me, I think the biggest issue there is spectators. I don't think, assuming, I don't think the participants are very high risk at all, I think it's quite low risk. I think, I think the spectators are where you're going to have a, you would have a decision to make in terms of coming out in and, you know, how much spacing there is and that sort of thing. I think that would be a bigger issue than the participants.
Thanks Lance, I don't know if you want me to respond. Part of that swimming discussion is not just a West piece. It's kind of been a whole conference discussion. The other schools in the conference, because of the setup of their pools and where swimmers would meet and prepare for the races and the relays, there's just some uncertainty that we'd be able to keep the kind of distance that we would feel safe in. So I think it's not just a Wausau generated thing, it's kind of a position the conference is mindful of.
Yeah, you certainly wouldn't be able to maintain six feet at all times, especially with relays. You have to be able to maintain with soccer or football either. I mean, that's just part of the reality. The same thing might happen in the spring too, which is where, I think we get back to Pat's point about it being voluntary for those students and parents to make that decision. Unlike school, which is not voluntary, which is compulsory and we hold it here in school or during. I just think athletics are totally different.
What about the students that participate in hub access? So that's where my concern lies because there is something to be said about voluntary. The safer choice to me though does seem to be to move the higher risk sports to spring of 2021. But if we're going to pursue the notion of being voluntary and going forward in the fall, we know there's a variety of hub models that are going to start first with the internet access for students that have no internet access or weak internet access. And then as time goes on, if we're still in virtual learning, there will be students, presumably high school students, that are coming in for, you know, science labs and things that they really can't do virtually. And these could be athletes. And now they are convened together with their fellow classmates, it's not voluntary.
Tricia, can I just ask a clarifying question? If this does not pass, does that mean that we will proceed with sports as scheduled? Or do we need, or would we need to amend the motion in order to proceed per the schedule?
Well, we don't have the motion out there yet. I mean, we could modify and have a motion to, we can modify this motion. Whether it's pursue fall sports, whether it's make changes in how these are delineated. Right now, we're just discussing.
The schools have to announce by September 1 anyway?
Yes.
So, you know, we don't, we won't have final board action before that. I guess I look at more of administration seeking board input. Because this isn't a special meeting, we can't take action tonight, then the schools have to announce by September 1.
Well, and that's what we discussed in past meetings was, we thought this, there was, there was some comments by board members that this should be a board decision and some that may feel it's an administrative decision.
No, yeah, I'm not disagreeing that it should be a board decision. I'm just saying that the, this, it can't be official each night anyway. We can have a vote, you know, a vote on it, but it's not official action. But it's, if this is a regular meeting, that's not a special meeting.
We would support the advisory vote.
But if I'm not mistaken, many of our neighboring districts for football and soccer have already gotten together and started to create their schedule. Am I correct in saying that, Brian, or am I incorrect? Because scheduling has to take place first. Are we going to be a part of it or not?
Jim, I think I'm, Jim, can you, okay, I think I'm on again. Jim, we've worked schedules for the Wisconsin Valley Conference for the fall sports with or without East and West. And so we're prepared to like implement whatever schedule that the board will like us to follow. And arguably, you touched on a couple of things that if we decide that we're going to go in the spring with some or all of our fall sports and the conference by and large chooses to stay in the fall, we would have to seek out a schedule that would be different than the ones that we've been working on in the conference.
I figured as much, Brian, as I said in that statement, bottom line is, we would have to travel because we don't have synthetic fields around here. The weather in March and April would be awfully cold for our kids.
Lance, to your point, Keith has mentioned that the administration would follow an advisory vote.
I just wanted to ask, since Lance brought it up with swimming, about spectators. No matter which way this goes, what sports go, what are we going to do about spectators? Is it going to be mask mandatory? Is it going to be limited numbers, total distancing? Only one of the three at the four that are considered low risk is indoors. So that's the only thing I'm concerned about, but I know how full this town field can get.
Jane, this is Brian Miller again, and I don't mean to monopolize. I have my partner over at East Del. The discussion among the conference schools is undecided. We've gone anywhere from no spectators at events to issuing up to four tickets per student that's participating. So obviously spectators would be very limited to being non-existent.
I think it's something that we need to address.
So, I mean, Brian, to Jane's point, would we be comfortable saying, hey, you know, what if it's an indoor sport, right? It has to be mandatory masks for spectators? And if it's an outdoor sport, for, I don't know, for those, I don't know what the right wording would be, but there could be some type of a mask requirement? If it's going to allow family members and friends and that to come and observe? I think that people would be, would be supportive of that because they're the largest concern, they'll be concerned is getting the students to be able to play.
Well, that, and that's just it, Pat, I love going to high school sports, but if I can't go this season because we're limited to two to four people per participant, if it means they get to play, it's worth it, I mean.
Oh, sure, yeah, exactly. But I don't know, you know, whatever's easier administratively to execute on, I haven't worded. And I, I would just throw it out there, Tricia, if it's an advisory vote, you know, whatever that we're looking for, I, or what Jim and Lance said earlier, and I would put a motion or a thought forward that we allow the sports to continue per their original schedule. Any additional safety, that administration or athletic directors, whomever deems necessary, you know, to provide as safe as an environment as possible for spectators and athletes.
Okay, so Pat put a motion forward.
Not well articulated, I guess, but it's forward.
Can we summarize it just so we know?
So let's just make sure we have this summarized. You want, Pat's motion is to move forward with the fall schedule.
Yes, including any same measures that administration deems necessary for the athletes and spectators, whatever, for spectators.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
I just have one question from a nursing.
Ryan needs to mute. Can you mute Ryan? Go ahead, Lee.
I'm eating a cookie, yes.
My question is this, my understanding is that, that this whole thing keeps changing. And I'm wondering, at one time we were talking about fifteen minutes in close proximity of being the risk factor. Now, we're debating whether a swimmer or a relay who comes in and touches a wall can trigger another swimmer coming off platform. I don't much understand, oh, this is a problem. I don't, this has got to be a problem.
And you are correct, as far as swimming. Swimming is considered a low-risk sport. The chlorine, the, it takes care of some of the disinfecting. The swimmers are in lanes that are generally, they'd be about six feet apart. And as to Jane's point, it would be more the spectators that I would be concerned about. I would say that we would follow the same rules that we are having for everybody coming into the school. If you are coming to a swim meet, you are in a school, you will be required to wear a mask and you will be required to six feet of distance in the stands if we allow spectators at all. That would defer to the athletic directors. But as far as swimming itself, that would seem like a reasonable sport.
And what about soccer? Again, we're talking about their outside and the question was, as I understood this, fifteen minutes in close proximity to inside.
That has changed a little bit. As of August 10th, it originally started out as fifteen minutes of contact closer than six feet. So for the most part, it's on, apart for fifteen, we're only in contact for fifteen minutes. As of August 10th, those fifteen minutes are cumulative minutes in a 24-hour period. So if, closer than six feet, that's the key word, six feet. If you are closer than six feet for 15 cumulative minutes in 24 hours. In soccer, again, they're moving, they're running back and forth. I doubt that they would be in contact with any individual other player for 15 minutes other than in a huddle or something. That's where you're going to get that 15 minutes of, the coach huddles everybody around and you will very easily get a cumulative 15 minutes of exposure to other kids. So that's something to consider there.
Thank you.
You bet.
I just have a comment.
Go ahead, Pat.
I just have a comment to make. So I've been very, very torn on, you know, fall sports. And so, you know, with virtual start and everything, I almost feel as if something needs to give. And so I'm very unsure about how I'm going to vote on this. But I almost feel as if, you know, with virtual start and with fall sports, it is an elective. And so I almost feel as if, you know, something has to give for these students. And so I'm kind of leaning towards maybe voting for fall sports to start. This is my comment.
President, can I ask a question? This is Brian.
Yep.
On that motion, just a piece of clarification. I think I understood Pat's motion, but in terms of implementing it to prove a pass, if the conference decides they don't want to run a sport in the fall, for instance, swimming, does the boards wish that East and West try to fill that conference, that schedule with other schools? Or would you want us to follow what the other conference schools are doing?
That's an excellent question for clarification.
So thinking through that, I think it goes, Jim, to your earlier point, right? About goal is to not travel, right? Or to minimize travel as much as possible. So would it make sense at that point if the, if our conference pulls out of a fall sport and they're saying, no, we're going to run this in the spring? You know, do we, do we follow that guideline? Or, you know, because of that, or do we try to go it alone?
I would, if you're asking me the question, to throw it back to Brian, that, that I would agree. Being an athletic director for many years, I want to do what the conference has done. But also, you've been talking about fans being there. Brian, have the athletic directors talked about streaming the games? Since we stream our classes now, it will be. I would ask John Uding, can we stream football, soccer, volleyball, right down the whole list? Which I know you can, but that's another option for.
I think they were, he's looking for direction on if the conference, if the conference goes one direction, I think.
No, I agree.
So we should follow.
The conference.
Yeah, which to me makes sense, right? Because if you're going to minimize travel, you're going to minimize confined spaces and buses and things like that. So that would be my thought, certainly open to other suggestions.
This is Lance, I agree with that. If we end up as the only outlier and the rest of the conference was all going to do it in the spring, I think that our swimmers and our families would understand that they would have a better chance of having a more complete season in the spring. And so I think they would probably favor that. I don't think that's going to happen, but it's a good thing to bring up, case of others.
Need a motion in a second.
Okay, if there aren't any other comments, I believe we have a motion and a second. And can you repeat it again? Or Vice President, he can. So there was a request to repeat the motion.
I would motion that we continue with all of the fall sports as scheduled in conjunction with any additional safety measures that administration deems necessary for the student, athletes, and spectators.
And what about following the conference?
Oh, good point, Jane, thanks. And should our conference choose to postpone a fall sport to the spring, we would follow the conference's direction and postpone that particular sport as well.
And Lance is seconding.
So Pat and Lance. All right, I guess we'll continue with the vote. Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Carlo?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
I couldn't hear her.
Beth, could you say that again?
Yes.
Thank you. Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
No.
Lance Trowell?
Yes.
Trish Zunker? Yes. Okay, that is seven, one, that passed. All right, that motion passed, seven yes, one no. With that, I'm seeking a motion to adjourn. Beth Martin first and a second from Lance Trowell. All right, we have a first from Beth, a second from Lance Trowell, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries, meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody. All the segments that were dead.